Congressional leaders on how important our language was and to have that language preservation dollars available for us to go ahead and receive, I think that was a huge accomplishment and getting that recognition as well, Senator. I know in us moving forward in the, in the trying to identify as many Navajos as we possibly can to get them formally recognized in the, in the formula that the Treasury is putting together right now through the different obstacles that they're having to work with. I know that one of the big proportions, we're trying to make sure is that all our Navajo people are represented and really trying to identify them, the ones that are living off the nation too as well, and the ones that are living in Reima Chapter. As you know, that, that was one of the areas that was scrutiny scrutinized last time just for the fact that Reima Chapter was not within the same unilateral base of overseen by the Navajo, I, Navajo Area Office. So I just, we just wanted to make sure that all our Navajo people are included in that formula this time, this coming, this go around. But I thank you again, we are, we are definitely looking into those, working on this as immediately as possible. We started our work sessions yesterday and today's our second day. We will be working through all these different variables, Senator, whether it be those infrastructure projects like water, power line, housing, transportation and broadband, especially the working together to try to get our own internal identified kinks out of the way and cut the red tape as we best possibly can in order for us to service and process paperwork in order to meet the needs of our Navajo people and get those water lines and get those power lines and get those right of ways completed. We also making sure that we're having that education, public safety, health, judicial branch, and what's importantly, our chapters having their, their action and immediate response to what their needs are too as well. And in that, we're looking at different financial management accomplishments and led by Navajo Nation Controller's Office, but also looking at our past leaders and our enterprises as well and trying to come up with a four, a measurable measuring stick for all of these different opportunities that we do have this coming this time around. So again, thank you very much, Senator, for that, and thank you very much for your team members and their awesome work they're doing for helping us just in getting us these, this funds. So colleagues, I just want to make sure what was attached, we will forward all that information over to your office, Senator, our schedule and everything we're doing to help assist in making sure that we're getting the best possible options available to my colleagues and to the President so that we can make the best possible decisions for our Navajo people. So without further ado, let me go ahead and go to the floor and Senator take some questions from members of the Navajo Committee of the 24th Navajo Nation Council. I do have Honorable Kialan McGee from Mini Farms on the line. Honorable Kialan McGee, floor is yours.
Speaker, good afternoon again. Oh, yeah, this, um, the honorable US Senator, Mr. Luhon, I believe that we've met several times at your office in DC. My name is Kialan McGee Jr. and I represent five chapters from the Arizona side of the Navajo Nation, representing five chapters. The most important thing that we continue and I continue to, when I make my visit to your office was uranium and then veterans. So we just need to continue to ask for your help, and I'm not sure if you still remember a letter that I sent to all the Navajo Nation delegation, the US Senators and the House of Representatives member that represents the Navajo Nation regarding a direct service for veterans on the Navajo Nation. As you know, that a lot of our veteran services are off the reservation, only at time these services comes on to the Navajo Nation, but we really don't have a full direct support by the United States government on the Navajo Nation. So I believe that this, I believe it's time for us to make a change to see if we could be able to have some forms of a service happening and operating full time on the Navajo Nation. And that's my, I guess, reiterating my request to, to you as Senator representing the state of New Mexico. I also want to continue to ask, I did met with Congressman O'Halloran last week regarding uranium. Uranium is another issue that we really, I continue to ask for full support. As Mr. O'Halloran always say that if this, if these open uranium sites were in any vicinity of Washington DC or New York or other area, I believe that there will be a quick action to resolve these particular open uranium site. But now that it's on the Navajo Nation, it's just taking longer and longer and longer just to even finishing the study while at the same time today it's windy on the Navajo Nation and I won't doubt that any of these particles are airborne and going in any direction. So I see that's another area that I believe that the Senators really needs to step up in helping the Navajo Nation resolving the uranium issue. Lastly, I apologize for taking up too much time, but lastly, I believe that all of these, all the funding that's going to be coming forth to the Navajo Nation, this ARP funding, lot of time and every time I speak, I always say that a lot of these policies are developed surrounding a metropolitan as a non-Indian reservations, uh, social economic situation. So when it comes to the Navajo Nation for ourself, we, we, we comes, we, we really get into policy that really, that we get ourself in the situation where a lot of these projects begins to be disqualified or not allowable. So I believe that the US Congress would need to revise a lot of these policies to where it doesn't hamper or delay a lot of these projects that we're looking for, for the 110 communities across the Navajo Nation. So that's another area that I believe the United States Congress really needs to look into that we have to deal with the BIA, we have to deal with the state, we have to deal with the counties, and then for us, we have to also deal with other neighboring tribes. So these are some areas that we have to be able to move forward. When we say that we have three years to complete this particular process, if any project is going to be commenced on the Navajo Nation, it's just doing the studying or preparing will take three years while the actual project will continue to be idle. So I believe that's one, another area that I, I'm asking and requesting on behalf of the Navajo people that we continue to resolve and streamline the process of approval of any projects on the Navajo Nation and any other tribal, tribal land. So that's my request to you, Mr. Congress, Senator Ray Luhon, and I appreciate the understanding. I appreciate that there be a response so I can relay the message back to the Navajo people that I represent from the Central Agency of the Navajo Nation. So with that, Speaker, I thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Honorable Kialan McGee. I do have Chairman Daniel So next in the queue. Colleagues, if you could make sure, try to keep your questions at a limited amount of time just for the fact of how many individuals that we want, want to ask Senators questions. I appreciate that. So Chairman Daniel So, floor is yours.
Yeah, yeah, brother Senator Ben Ray Luhon, thank you for your work and we appreciate the visit that we're having here. Basically, the Eastern Navajo Agency, you know, the land status and all those aspects. The one part that I'm really wanting to pursue is, is the fact from the premise that it was federal program, federal program fund that first dropped a greater blade on the lands of Eastern Navajo. The roads were established so that the boarding schools could be built or the day schools. And then from there, then the community roads were bladed by BIA machines. And through the years, no need for right of ways, no need for clearances. Then in the seventies, or shortly thereafter, then these aspects, NEPA, historic preservation, archaeological clearance, biological clearance, those steps came in. And now the, the studies that are required to get the clearances for roads falls on the nation and ultimately the chapters. However, my premise is the federal agencies, whether they be EPA, whether they be the Bureau of Land Management or Bureau of Indian Affairs, they're applying regulations that are ex post facto. And so in that aspect, those roads should already be, and, and the community basically by their needs to go to school, to go to health services, to go do the necessary shopping. They've accepted the roads. And this federal dominance of exacting imminent domain is something that I think your office and the departments and agencies of the federal government really need to relook at that and say, yes, that one's archival roads, those are verified in the federal archives, yes, that's a road, that doesn't need all these clearances. This other road that's been newly established, yes, after 1970, then those are items that the nation and the chapters really have to work on. So in, in that aspect, my premise and my, my own, I guess, results driven thinking is what I presented, and I really appreciate your help to get those items changed so that those of us in the Eastern Agency can develop the necessary roads, the infrastructure, the right of ways, the right of ways along the highways for power line, water line and fiber optics. So those are some things that are very inclusive of what would drive, one, economic development, two, community development, and the aspect of bringing a level of lifestyle that is acceptable. No other citizen anywhere else would, would accept this. It would be knocking on the doors of their elected representatives and us at this point in time, the Navajo Nation Council, the Navajo leadership look to you to help us at this point in time. And, and most specifically, and I could, you know, try to port barrel my request right now, but I want the general, the, this aspect that I really feel would be, it would be most effective and would be, it would get the results that we need. Thank you, and to the rest of your staff, yate, and thank you for all the work you do to help the Senator. Mr. Speaker, that would be the extent of my statement. Okay, back to you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chairman Daniel So. With that, Senator, let me go on down to Honorable Otto So at this time.
Hear me, Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Ben Ray Luhon, Senator. I appreciate you being on the line with us and, and also wish you, wish you well and your job in Washington, trying to help citizens of the United States. And one area that I just really want to speak to is the, the Navajo Nation has always been subjected to federal policies. These policies are set up at the federal level and they're destined to fail when they hit the ground here at, at, at all Indian reservations. And a form of, 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 of a rehabilitation of these policies need to be done because a lot of the procurement issues that the nation, we follow, that we face, normal such as leasing, such as different land status, those hinder the Navajo Nation process for basic things such as water and electricity on the Navajo Nation. And really hope that we, we really see that, 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 that aspect to be championed to, that way, you know, it will increase a lot of the Indian tribes to, to continue to, to, to seek economic development. The other is, I'm going to go back to Navajo Hopi Land Settlement Act, and there's some issues pertaining to the Land, Hopi Land Settlement Act that we really need your attention on. We're talking with Senator Udall, and we know that Udall is not in office no more. So therefore, you're one of the Senators, we really want to convey and educate a lot of the issues pertaining to the Navajo Hopi Land Settlement Act, and we will be reaching out to you. And then the other is all aspects of trying to, giving us the information pertaining to the American Rescue Plan. We really, we really thank Congress for, for thinking about Indian, the Indian country. And a lot of these policies that were passed really benefits us, but we really need to have that government to government consultation, and we really would like to seek that Congress applies pressure to US Treasury to hurry up and try to get these policies in place so that these distribution can happen. And the timeframes that are set in the act, two years is just, that's just around the corner. But an amendment is something that we need to look at, maybe expanding, extending it on to 2025 is something that, 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 that I, I see. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Otto So. At this time, I know, Senator, I know that taking some questions at this time was something that you wanted to do and hear directly from my colleagues of the 24th Navajo Nation Council and wanting to hear the direction that they have and also some of the, our colleagues who wanted to make sure that there was input from their districts, their areas, as I know that you are the Senator from New Mexico, but actually I think Navajo Nation, you're Senator of the net, of the whole entire nation and Senator of Indian country. So at this time, Senator, I can turn the floor back over to you and have you respond, and then we can go, because I know you are on a limited time basis here today. Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, I appreciate that very much. And, Mr. Speaker, just thank you so much to each and every one of the council delegates that did ask questions. And for those that haven't, if you have any questions, please just get in touch with me directly or through Brian Lee, and we can make sure we, we get connected. So I look forward to visiting with you personally as well. First, Mr. Speaker, I completely concur with the assessment of the three delegates that asked me questions from Mr. McGee and both from Daniel So and Otto So with the concerns associated with barriers to easements. And what I raised in the Indian Affairs Committee with under Chair Schott and Vice Chair Murkowski that we held on water infrastructure is the concerns that exist that you highlighted in that it's not recognized when there are projects that have already been approved for you to go to even rehabilitate them or to do more grading or to pave or to fix an existing bridge. And that only compounds a problem when we're working on water, wastewater and broadband electricity projects. So what I suggested, and I believe that now that we have a Secretary of Interior that understands these challenges, that there should be a memorandum of understanding with all federal agencies working at the table together with one person working that is coordinating them, because you should not have to go to every federal agency one at a time when we're working to get these projects approved, and it has to be included. And so I raised it as a priority for the infrastructure package that we are working on, and I'll continue to work with my colleagues to get that done, number one. Number two, I also agree that there needs to be reforms at the Bureau of Indian Affairs. BIA should be helping with self-determination, not, not being, getting in the way of the work that the tribes and the pueblos are doing in this area and this space. And I think there should be more technical support and punitive actions that are taken by the Bureau. And I've been working with my colleagues, I'm hopeful that we can work with every one of the tribal leaders across America to continue to get buy-in and work with the leadership of the Navajo Nation to see how things can be improved. So I definitely look forward to getting that done as well. Very much appreciate the question surrounding downwinders and also with the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act and the uranium abandoned mines. And I completely agree with Representative O'Halloran's assessment, and I shared this in hearings. If we were in big cities like we saw when there was the meltdown of Three Mile Island the same time that the berm broke in Church Rock, Three Mile Island got all the investment, Church Rock, we're still working to get attention to clean up. It, it's an absolute embarrassment and disgrace that the United States of America, who created these problems, created the contamination and the illness that families still suffer from today, has not come forward to help people and to clean up these, these waste sites and also the abandoned uranium mines. And that's something I'll continue to work with, with my colleagues from Arizona, Utah, New Mexico, but for that matter, across America. Myself and Senator Kramer, we're, oh, sorry, Senator Crapo, we're about to introduce the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act in the, in the Senate, and we're going to continue working with our colleagues in the House to make progress, so we continue to look forward, to making forward progress there. And as I shared with the testimony in the hearing, I, I will never forget the voice of the Navajo elders when she came forth and she asked the Congress a very simple question. And what she said was, "Are you all waiting for us to die so that the problem goes away?" I thought that was very profound, because to me, that's what it feels like, and that's why there's urgency for me to work on RICA, to recognize New Mexico, Arizona, all these counties and Utah, in our respective states and in Guam and Idaho and so many others as downwind communities. How can it be that where the first bomb was tested, where there was a berm that broke in Church Rock, where there was an open uranium pit where they're still abandoning uranium mines? And we know that the, the workers that worked in these uranium areas that, and pits that, that took the yellow cake home because it was on their clothes. How can they not be designated downwind communities? Nobody's been able to answer that question to me. And so these are all areas that we have to continue to work on together and make progress on, and I look forward to doing that. And then last thing that I have to say, Mr. Speaker, or two last things I should say. First, I just want to thank council delegate Otto So for also inviting Mark Kelly, who's now one of my colleagues in the US Senate, and, and I will continue to work with him and cinema to make sure we're working together as well. So just thank you for that. And then, Mr. Speaker, you challenged me with something when I became a member of the United States Senate, and you said that, you know, it's, it's never the case that members of the United States Senate open offices on the Navajo Nation. And you know that for a long time in New Mexico, we've had our offices in Farmington and San Juan County, and so I'm proud to announce to you today that my office in San Juan County is going to be in Shiprock, New Mexico, and Brian Lee is working to get that one opened up, but I want to thank you for your guidance and your mentorship there, Mr. Speaker, because I think that's important. And as we work to make sure we're reaching out to all of our constituents across New Mexico, it's important that we make ourselves available and our offices reflect that as well. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I, I thank you for your time, for your prayers, and I do look forward to seeing you all in person here real soon.
Thank you very much, Senator. Thank you very much for listening to my colleagues here today and listening to the Navajo people, but continuing your dedication and your efforts to work for, with us and to remembering our youth, all our employees here on the Navajo Nation, our elders, and what's importantly, I know that you're a huge advocate as well for our veterans, not only here but across the Big Waters too as well. All our veterans are, all our active military that are in harm's way, working together with your administration over the years, I know we've become good friends. But I just want to say thank you very much for opening up that office there in Shiprock, and I know Brian probably has to move somewhere up that way, but we look forward to having that discussion, and I know the community have, have open arms to you there, and I know that it's, it's going to be a great opportunity for us to maintain this action and continued relationship. Our office will continue to work together with your office and the rest of the delegation, congressional delegation on updates as need to be on these ARPA funds and make sure that we do have consistent closeout documents as well in meeting the First CARES Act requirements. But we thank you for the flexibility in this, and thank you for leading the charge across for Indian country and maintaining that responsibility to know that we're still here, the resiliency is here within our young people, within our elders, within everybody here, and we're all, all a part of the people, the five fingered people. And knowing that we have to work together for our next seven generations. Senator, I thank you very much for being here with us and taking your time out of your schedule and knowing that the opportunity is at hand. We will continue to make sure we get everything completed and working together with your office to meet the requirements and making sure that we're working together to fixing some of these options and hurdles that you've known about and you continue to know about, whether it be for our constituents or be for the policies that are in place there at D.C. that need to be changed or even some of the regulations that can be changed just for the secretaries in order for them to have these simple right-of-ways moved forward and having a possible better solution for us and for the Navajo people. So we just want to say thank you very much from the bottom of the heart, some of the Navajo people. Thank you for thinking of us and thank you for being a good friend to the Navajo Nation. So we'll talk to you again soon, Senator. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You have a good day and a blessed day as well and to all the council delegates, to all the chairs of the committees. It was an honor to join you today. And again, I look forward to seeing you in person here in the near future. Thank you again.
Oh, yeah, have a good day. Thank you, colleagues, again. I know that we only had the senator here for that limited time, but that we are back on our agenda. I think Mr. Brian Lee's on the line still. I do have Madam Chair Charles Zune if you were wanting to ask a question. I know that we only had the senator for that limited time, but I think Mr. Lee's on the line and you might still be able to meet up with him or as he's going to be your new neighbor there in the Shiprock community. And Madam Chair, I don't know if you have a question right now at this time or what the direction you're looking. I just have you in the queue. Madam Chair Charles Zune. Madam Chair Charles Zune.
Speaker, I was hoping to speak to the Senator about the issues in Shiprock, but I guess it's okay. I talk to Brian all the time. He knows what the issues are. He's awesome.
Okay. Well, he just announced they're opening up the office in Shiprock. So I think you'll have better, you have closer access to him now, yeah. All right, colleagues, any other comments, questions? We are at the end of our presentation today for the NABAC committee work session. Any announcements at this time?
Speaker, it's your turn.
Oh, Honorable Eugene Sew, floor is yours.
I didn't answer the roll call. I reckon I was muted, so just for the record. And I just went through, I was going to ask a question to the Senator, but since it's out of my jurisdiction, I already talked to the President of Navajo. I figured I had mistaken. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Eugene Sew. We got you down. That, colleagues, if there's no other announcements, we do have our work session here tomorrow. Our work session is actually going to be starting at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. I know there was a quest to have a couple of meetings before that. So our work session will be tomorrow on broadband and education and then working together moving forward. We do have a NABAC committee work session on Thursday and then a special NABAC committee meeting on Friday. And then we have a proposed Navajo Nation Council session. Do we have enough signatures for that yet? I think there's 12 signatures. So there's almost enough signatures for that special session. Moving on down, you'll see the different work sessions that we'll be having next week. Colleagues, if there's any further questions to the Speaker's office regarding the timelines, I know that we're meeting together and want to make sure that the Office of the President and Vice President are invited to our discussions too as well. So again, one last note. Congratulations to the Shantos community for your groundbreaking today. I know that there was a lot of individuals that might have been out there. Thank you very much for the presenters today and thank you very much to NHA. But I give a shout-out again to Navajo Department of Transportation. Thank you for the great presentation and the great work that you guys are doing out there. We look forward to the discussion tomorrow. If there's no other questions, we can adjourn. Hey, with that, there's no further questions. We're officially adjourned at 4:53 p.m. Thank you very much, everyone that's on the line. Thank you to all our listeners. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to all the staff members. I thank you to all the staff from the executive and judicial as well and legislative. Have a good evening. We'll see you tomorrow. Bueno.
Bueno.